All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting of the Mayor and Board of Commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun for April the 25th, 2017. May I get the roll call, please?
Commissioner Ofton-Wreath.
Here.
Commissioner Braun.
Here.
Commissioner Wannick.
Here.
Commissioner Pearson.
Here.
Mayor Mallion.
Here.
As elected reflects the elected body, it's here in question.
Will you rise with me for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You bow your heads with me for a brief prayer. Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of our town, on behalf of our elected body. I ask that you watch over our elected body, Lord, as well as our citizens. I ask that you watch over our police department and guide us in the right ways, God. I ask that you watch over those serving overseas and the military that are here in the United States as well. Be with us as we leave tonight and be with us until we can return again. In Jesus' name, amen. All right. So the first order of business is the approval of our special meeting minutes, which was our budget workshops. We had two of them for the 2017-2018 fiscal year budget workshops. Town Administrator?
You have the minutes.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, moving on. There is a public presentation for our fiscal year 2018 budget. Town Administrator?
Yes. Now, what I wanted to do is, I think it's always important this time of the year, to sort of give a snapshot of where the town is at financially, but more importantly, some of the hurdles that the town has been dealing with for many years. And I think, you know, that old saying that it takes a village to raise a child, it has some similarities here in that it takes an entire community to move the community forward. It's not just the elected body, you know, passing legislation and making all the decisions. We all strive to be, to have as much involvement of people as possible. So I think it's important that our residents especially understand what's involved in doing the budget, but more importantly, a sort of a self-analysis of where we are at financially. So I have a couple of things that I want to take the time to bring the residents up to speed on the process. And the first thing is the constant yield tax rate certification that we get from the state of Maryland every year. And basically what this is, is a document that the state sends to us roughly around February telling us that based upon their assessments, which we all know they do every year, they hypothetically do a third of the properties in town so that over a three-year period, everybody's property has been assessed at that point. And so what you have here is, in July of 2016, they, in their analysis, they have the Town of Rising Sun's assessable real estate property base, real property base, being There are some other calculations that come in, such as homestead tax credit, net assessable real property base after you take the homestead tax credit out, actual local tax rate per 1,000. Last year, the town's rate was .48 or 48 cents for every $100 of assessed value of a property, for an expected revenue over this current operating year of $908,136. So while we have been operating our fiscal budget for this past year, the state has been out evaluating another third of the properties. And unfortunately, as I reported last year, you can really see the impacts of the sewer and water moratorium on the Town of Rising Sun in terms of its stifling growth, but more important, stifling the enthusiasm of anybody really wanting to invest in the Town of Rising Sun. And the thing that really drives values in a community is not just the quality of the houses that people live in, but job factors, job sectors, the type of amenities that are available. So a lot of it has to do with your commercial properties. So if you have a sewer and water moratorium, no one is really going to be able to invest in new businesses. And of course, no one will invest in new residential properties, which by their nature, as soon as you build a residential property, it automatically pulls the value up of the properties on each side of it and on the same block and in the same neighborhood. And if you get a housing development of, say, 50 or 70 houses plus, it can have a big positive impact on the value of homes. And we talked about this last year, that the value of your home is very critical to you as a homeowner also, because yes, if the value of your home goes up, you hypothetically would pay more in real estate tax, but that pales in comparison to the financial leverage that you have on your property. And what I mean by that is, we all know from getting home equity loans and refinancing our home to do certain things, whether it be paying for a child's wedding, a child's education, a new car, an addition on your house, whatever, whether it be the necessities that you need to live, that you're leveraging the value of your home, or extra amenities like you want to have, say, a vacation home, a boat, or whatever, some kind of recreational hobby, the value of your home is what gives you your financial leverage. So when the value of your home drops, you in essence lose financial leverage. So it's really important that the Town of Rising Sun do everything it can to try to maintain the value of properties. So when you look at 2017, the state went around and assessed the properties, and you can see that the overall assessed value of properties is projected to drop again, resulting, and I think it's, I have another sheet that will show it, it's like a $3 million drop in assessed values. And so that means when the town keeps the tax rate that it has from last year, hypothetically, the town will lose $16,000, roughly $16,000 of revenue. Now where that becomes a juggle is when the town balanced its budget last year with a $7,000 surplus, that was running a very tight budget. And I have another document I'm going to show you in a couple of minutes here that shows all the efforts that not only this board, but prior boards have made to keep expenses in line. So the natural reaction people have is, well, if you have a budget that you don't have a whole lot of surplus, just cut. And we're hearing that discussion right now in the county, with the county struggling with the tax increase that they want to do, and people are questioning, you know, why aren't you making cuts? Make cuts first. I'm going to show you in a couple of minutes here the significant cuts that the town has made, including staffing, to keep the town in a better position going forward. So to recap here, the gross assessable value for this year is $187,347,007. So if you were to divide that by 100 and then multiply it by the .4800, that's where you come up with the projected revenue. Now what the state does, and this is a state law, and I think, I've said this before, I think it's a rather, a very good law that the state passed compared to other communities I've worked in, that a lot of times, an elected body in a municipality will get the benefit of saying, hey, we didn't raise your taxes. Well, they didn't have to because the assessed values went up. And so they might have realized a good chunk of additional tax revenue coming in, and so they're able to say, hey, we didn't raise your taxes, when in reality, the assessed value went up, so they didn't have to raise the taxes. In the state of Maryland, all municipalities are required to notify you if anything happens with the tax rate that would result in an additional $25,000 of additional revenue. So what that means is, the state of Maryland recognizes that it's not a good idea for communities that are essentially businesses to be losing revenue on a yearly basis. So what they allow you to do is to adopt what is called a constant yield tax rate. And if you look at the bottom of the document here, what this, it's a little bit small, but what this is saying is that in order to generate the same amount of revenue that was generated last year, if the town were to raise the real estate tax from .48 to .4886, which basically is 86 of a penny increase, the town would recapture that $16,000. Technically, you know, based upon state law, the town doesn't have to, a municipality doesn't have to advertise that, they don't have to do anything, they could just adopt the constant yield tax rate, and hypothetically, people don't pay any more taxes than they did the year before because you adopt the constant yield tax rate. So that's the first thing I wanted to show you. Now I wanted to show you what all this, what this, what impact this has had over the Town of Rising Sun over the last seven, eight years. And you're going to recognize this chart because it's very similar to the one that we did last year. And let me enlarge it a little bit here. And what this is basically doing is showing you what the projected net assessable real property base is going to be this year, and that number comes from the number that I just showed you at the bottom of that previous sheet, and then last year's net assessable real property value, which this number is a number that was at the top of the sheet showing 2016. As I said, that's a net loss of value, property value of $3,351,203, or a decrease of 1.77%. So what I'm showing you here is, and I've said this before, I went to a seminar many years ago talking about the financial, the impact of the national economy and things that happen on a national level typically take about two years to trickle down into the local level, local municipal government. And we all have heard the stories about the housing and economy collapse in 2008, 2009. So when you look at it, in 2010, the very same properties that you drive down the street and see right now, your house, your neighbor's house, businesses that you see right now, they had a net assessable, or they had an assessable real property tax value of $236,170,020. And you can start to see the impact of the, what the nation's economy has done to the Town of Rising Sun, but more importantly, what the sewer and water moratorium has done to the Town of Rising Sun. So when you run this out over a seven-year period, the Town of Rising Sun has lost $50,311,158 of assessed value of properties. Remember, we talked about, that's financial leverage. That's financial leverage for the town, and it's financial leverage for you as an individual property owner. That is a loss of 21.30%. If you add the cost of inflation over the last seven years, today's dollars, the difference is $56,247,875, or a 33.10% loss in value since 2010. Those are big numbers. And if you think about what that does to you, this is just a basic stab here, if you live in a house, it's valued at $200,000 in 2010, hypothetically, your, the value of your house has dropped to $66,000, has dropped $66,000. That, again, is huge financial leverage impact on the property owners of our community. I said a couple of minutes ago that the Town of Rising Sun, not only this body, but other elected bodies, have tried very hard to react to the sewer and water moratorium and continue to tighten its belt financially. And I think that in the past, elected bodies have not gotten credit for really doing that because we don't really do a very good job of showing the data so people can see that. So what this is, is based upon the audited financials, not the budget numbers, because we budget, and if we don't spend, well, it's not, it's a different number than what we actually spent and what shows up on the audited financials every year. So in 2009, the town's expenses in the general fund were $1,947,149. And you can see over the years, the town has gradually gone down, and it's had a couple of spikes that have gone up, but that's because the town has invested in its infrastructure. Over the past, since 2009, the town has invested $1.5 million in street repaving and sidewalks. So the town has, you know, made attempts to invest in the town other ways to try to bring the value up as opposed to doing tax increases. And as we talked about last year, the town had not had a tax increase in over a decade, well before the sewer and water moratorium kicked into place. And last year, the town just couldn't balance things, and it made significant cuts. So as you're well aware, we had to raise the taxes last year. So that, in 2016, our expenses were $1,602,789, which is $344,360 less than what they were in 2009. And then when you look at our year-to-date numbers and what we project to spend for the remaining couple of months, we're looking at our expenses being $1,400,000 for a difference of $547,149 since 2009. So what I'm saying is, there's been a real concerted effort to keep expenses down while we have been dealing with all these other issues that have come up. The other thing that I, to parlay that a little bit further, and we talked about this at the sewer and water moratorium, not the sewer and water moratorium, I'm sorry, the meet and greet that we had a couple of weeks back, I want to make sure we enlarge this a little bit. When you look at what each person, each resident of the Town of Rising Sun is paying, and you compare it to the other communities, what you have here is, this is the population of the other communities, this is their assessed property values based upon numbers of July 2016, this is how much money is collected in the real estate tax per person. So if you look at Chesapeake City, for every person living in that community, they collect $120,866 off the value of the properties, meaning that's pretty good, that's a pretty healthy, you know, ratio there to be collecting $120,000 per person based upon their property value. And then you look at how much the tax revenue that's generated, which is a byproduct of what their tax rate is based upon the value of their properties, that means that they are collecting $552.72 hypothetically from every resident in the Town of Chesapeake City. Now, the color shading here, if you assume that all of these communities offer the same services, they pave streets, they fix potholes, they collect some trash, they take care of some parks, they're all equal. But then you start to look at the color shading, and the communities that offer police, in addition to the other services, are highlighted in blue, and that's the Town of Northeast and the Town of Perryville. And then when you look at the communities that offer police and their own building inspection, and remember, when we talk about building inspection, that keeps the control of the way things are built in our community in-house, and there's a revenue and service charge associated with that. So the Town of Elton and the Town of Rising Sun are the only two communities that offer police protection and building inspections in their community. But when you look at what the average amount of money collected for each person, you see that the Town of Rising Sun is all the way down at the bottom where we collect $315.64 per person living in the incorporated limits. So really, what that's saying is, there's a lot of bang for the buck going on here based upon the amount of tax revenue that's brought in per person living in the community based upon the assessed values. So again, coupled with the fact that the town is keeping expenses down, we're keeping the tax rate down also. The other thing that I wanted to show, and we had shown this at the meet and greets, is the water and sewer bill for all of the communities in Cecil County. And we've said this before, that yes, our sewer and water rate has risen significantly over the last couple of years because of need. And this chart is reaffirmed by what Commissioner Ofton-Wreath, you and I just heard from MDE sitting at a meeting the other day, about the average cost of sewer and water throughout the state of Maryland is very high per household. And so what we wanted to show is a comparison of where the Town of Rising Sun ranks in its sewer and water rates compared to the other communities. And many years ago, I think it was about maybe 2010 or 2011, the town went to a monthly billing, monthly billing as opposed to quarterly billing, and we did that for two reasons. Number one, it would make it a lot easier for residents to monitor their cash flow, quite frankly, because when your sewer and water rates start to go up, and you get a bill for your sewer and water in January, but it doesn't have a payment date until March, it's very easy for that to get away from you. And you, in that three-month time, could have a $400, $500 bill that now you're scrambling at the last minute to try to pay. So we went to the month-to-month billing to make it more manageable for people to pay it. And we also went to the month-to-month billing because, as we said, revenue is tight, and the town needed to position itself to have a better cash flow to provide the services. So when you look at the minimum monthly charge, people who live in the Town of Rising Sun have the lowest monthly minimum charge for sewer and water than anybody else in the county. And then when you start to look at, when people use on average 4,000 gallons, that's where we start to get a little bit higher. But the final summary is, I'm sorry, the Town of Rising Sun has the second lowest monthly charge per property, and it has the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 lowest, or you can say, sixth, fifth highest, or fourth highest in the county for what it costs for someone who uses 4,000 gallons a month of sewer and water. So again, yeah, we've experienced sticker shock over the last couple of years because of having to build a sewer plant and water issues, but a lot of the other communities are experiencing the same thing. So this is the foundation of what we're doing in the budget process, is figuring out how all these numbers play out, and then how to maintain the same services that residents have enjoyed over the years, being police protection, plowing snow, paving streets and sidewalks. You, in the most recent budget talks, we've talked, and it's in the medics, we talked about staffing needs, the elected body is very concerned about safety for our police officers. We live in a different world than what we lived in four years ago, three years ago. And I just saw this last night when I was leaving town to go home, our officers heard a call, which they always do over the county radio, and both of our patrol cars responded to a property outside of the Town of Rising Sun, meaning our guys just don't sit here and say, that's not the Town of Rising Sun, we're not going. Many times, our police officers are the first in in the surrounding areas of the county and around the Town of Rising Sun. But more importantly, when you hear the chief read on his monthly reports about traffic stops, there's a lot of traffic stops that take place on some dark rural roads in the middle of nowhere. And the last thing we want is our officers out there by themselves with some of the things that we've been hearing over the last, you know, really over the last year. And so while the town is keeping its expenses down, it doesn't want to sacrifice services, and the elected body is very sensitive about safety of our police officers. So those are the types of discussions that we are having in the budget meetings. The last thing I wanted to show you, because this had, this is always in a state of flux, is I want to remind everybody of our budget calendar that we have. We put this out a couple of meetings ago, and I believe one of the newspapers read it. Our next budget meeting is Thursday, May 4th, and then we have, like we did tonight, Tuesday, May 9th, is a town meeting, so we'll update people who didn't get a chance to come to the budget meetings, and then we'll have another public workshop on May 16th. This calendar is always in flux because it moves and things change, and you're going to see there's an action item on the agenda tonight that will alter this calendar again. So what we do is, we put them on our website, two meetings at a time, because we don't want to have them way out there, people plan for it, for whatever reason, we change the meetings, because quite frankly, in the past, we've gotten accused of playing some games when we cancel a meeting, and there could be a million different reasons why we postpone a budget meeting or move it to another date. So we've been advertising them, two meetings at a time.
The one highlighted in yellow is the first change from our original calendar that came out. It was going to be May 18th, but because of, I have an issue, and we backed it up to the 16th, so that's why that one's, the May 16th is highlighted. We changed that one from the 18th to the 16th.
Thank you, Town Administrator. And Commissioner Ofton-Wreath. All right. Next on our agenda is Resolution 2017-03, which is our Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, Terms of Appointment. And because Commissioner Braun has a little bit of a cough, I'm going to go ahead and read it to her, for her. I'm not going to read it to you, Pauline, I'm sure you've read it already. And the Town Administrator says I read too fast, so try to keep up with me if you can. Seatbelts first. All right. I'm going to go ahead and skip the boilerplates. It says, "Whereas the Code of Ordinances of the Town contains Chapter 2, titled Administration and Government, which establishes the general guidelines associated with the proper administration of affairs and business for the Town of Rising Sun, Maryland, in accordance with the Town Charter and other applicable federal and state laws; and whereas this chapter contains Article 2, titled Organization of Government, which establishes the various responsibilities of the mayor and commissioners, creation and structure of various staff positions, appointed consultants, departments, and appointed boards that handle the day-to-day administration of the town government as set forth by the Annotated Code of Maryland, Town Charter, and Town Code; and whereas the article contains Section 2-209, titled Creation and Administration of a Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, which further establishes the creation of both the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, and further establishes their membership, terms of appointments, removal, vacancy, meetings, rules of conduct, and records; and whereas this section specifically calls for terms of appointment, and whereas there has been a significant amount of turnover on both boards, and the mayor and commissioners would like to reaffirm the persons appointed to these boards with clear definition of their terms of appointments; and whereas the mayor and commissioners would like to reappoint the following persons to the below-listed boards, and for those persons to further serve in those appointed positions in accordance to the above code sections, and until their successors are duly appointed. Positions to fill the vacancies listed below will be put forward at a later date. Planning Commission: Ex-officio appointed by the Board of Commissioners. Joanne Jamison, to serve until June 30th of 2018. Thomas Mummy, to serve until June 30th of 2018. Susan Hemmer. Susan Hemmer, to serve until June 30th of 2019. Joanne Osborne, to serve until June 30th of 2019. Thomas Scully, to serve until June 30th of 2020. Tom Goble, to serve until June 30th of 2020. Board of Zoning Appeals: Joe Sestak, to serve until June 30th of 2018. We have two vacant positions, which would serve until June 30th of 2019. Bernie Chiamento, to serve until June 30th of 2020. And Jessica Gallatin, to serve until June 30th of 2020. Can I get a motion to approve the Resolution 2017-0?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Mayor, can I just clarify one thing? These are all people that have been appointed in the past, but we've had such a turnover, not only in the appointments, but at our staff level. The dates that you see after we went through our meeting minutes to try to figure out when people were appointed, and then did the five-year for the Planning Commission and the three years for the Board of Appeals. So the dates that you see here are not just arbitrary dates, they're based upon when they were originally appointed in town meeting minutes.
Thank you, Town Administrator. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2017-04, which is the real estate tax rate for fiscal year 2018, and that's Commissioner Althanreth.
Okay, I also am suffering with some allergies here, so bear with me, please. Whereas, this is real estate tax rate for fiscal year 2018, Rising Sun, Town of Rising Sun Resolution 2017-04. Whereas the town located in Cecil County, Maryland, is a municipality organized under the provisions of the Maryland Constitution and governed under provisions of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. And whereas the town is proclaimed as a perpetual entity with the right to pass laws. And whereas, Chapter 9 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Rising Sun, titled Finance, Taxation, Business, and Trade, contains provisions that grant the Board of Commissioners with the power to appropriate municipal monies for any purpose with the powers of the council, and to levy taxes and collect ad valorem property taxes, or any of the type of tax allowed by law, and to have general management control of the finances of the town. And whereas, the town has received notice from the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation that the final taxable net assessable real property base for the town of Rising Sun will decrease by roughly $3,351,203, which will result in projected loss of revenue for fiscal year 2018 of roughly $16,086. And whereas, the decline in property values is a direct result of the 11-year sewer and water moratorium, which has prohibited any new sewer and water connections and/or private investments in existing properties, causing over $50 million loss of property value, resulting in hundreds of thousands of dollars of lost tax revenue to pay for town services and investments in town infrastructure. And whereas, despite these significant losses in revenue, the town has worked very hard to keep expenses in line with the realities of the revenue that is collected, and has carefully monitored expenses over the last eight years, and has successfully reduced such expenses by $343,360, with the expenses for 2017 projected to come in roughly $200,000 less, I'm sorry, the expenses for 2017 projected to come in roughly $200,000 less than 2016. And whereas, in addition to lowering expenses, the mayor and commissioners have continued to reappropriate the use of revenues toward critical life, safety services, and infrastructure improvements to include over $1,550,000 in street and sidewalk improvements, with the idea that investing in the community, promoting economic development, and repealing the water and sewer moratorium is a better solution to improving the town's financial stability. And whereas, the residents of the town of Rising Sun have the second lowest tax burden per resident in Cecil County, as well as the second lowest monthly charge for sewer and water services, and the sixth lowest charge for sewer and water services based upon customer usage. And whereas, the mayor and commissioners will continue their commitment to keeping expenses for our residents as low as possible while maintaining the town's financial position and preserving the town's services as much as possible. Therefore, despite the continued loss of revenue due to declining property values, the town will maintain the current tax rate of 0.48 for each $100 of assessed value for 2018 fiscal year. Therefore, it be further resolved that the mayor and commissioners, the town of Rising Sun passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on the 25th day of April 2017.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I have a little piece of discussion, and that is, I've watched this board work really hard on this budget to make sure that we maintain the same tax rate. We're not going to raise your taxes. When it comes to not raising taxes, costs go up, just like a family's costs go up. The state of Maryland continues to send down things to the local level that they expect us to take on, and they expect the town to pay for it. That can be a burden. We have tried to become, you know, we understand where our citizens are, and it's right where we are. None of us want to raise taxes because we would be raising our own tax rates as well. So what do you cut? What is it that you can cut to do this? I know our Town Administrator has become very creative with different ways that we can potentially save money for our town. I can say, you know, a lot of the things that you see that we do, more than likely, has either come from a grant, if it's from our Parks and Recreation Department, or from a private donation. We do movies in the park every year, and we try our hardest to get private donations to fund that. Spooktacular, for instance, funded by donations as well. Although the town does put in a small amount of money, these are not things that we're doing, we do these things for our citizens. We're not doing them to be exorbitant and not to understand that, you know, that our citizens can't afford things. We try our hardest to cut what we can and to tighten our belts where we can. So I'm really proud of the board to be able to do this, and to be able to maintain the exact same tax rate, and hats off to them and to our Town Administrator for working hard on this budget.
Add a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. You know, we, last year, thankfully, since Calvin's been here, he's really provided us with a detailed spreadsheet of all the town's expenses, as well as the revenue streams that come in, which, having all those meetings we had last year, and actually the year before, really helped us as a board. I'm not, I don't work for a bank, it takes me a while to understand, that's why you always see me tell Patty, "Slow down, let me stay with the group," so that I can wrap my head around it. So we've really seen where the money is, and we've seen how the declining property values and the tax rate, what it was doing to us. But nobody wanted us to cut services with what's going on with the county's rate right now. Nobody wants a tax increase, but nobody wants a service cut to pay for it. So we are trying our best not to cut anything. We're trying to find places where there's been a decline that we can possibly cut out. And if you come to the budget workshops, you'll see, they're not real stuffy meetings, and we sat here for a good three and sometimes four hours going over all this stuff. So once again, you know, we just had two meetings, which were kind of group discussions more than anything else about, what are we going to do? The very first thing we found out was, what we tried to do last year by biting the bullet and raising a tax, is just already we've lost some money there. We thought that was going to get us through, and it kind of didn't. The sewer plant has really helped because now businesses see that we're serious about infrastructure, water and sewer infrastructure, something I've learned, and all you probably, I remember you talking about this when you did the sewer and water thing, it drives, it's your economic engine's fuel. And thankfully, we see Jeff here tonight, he's been bringing some business in. We've got all of our stores, except for a couple across the street, full. The town is on an upswing, even though as bad as things might sound. You know, one thing unfortunately, with our water rates, there's, tomorrow night, our neighbors over in Northeast are going to be having a hearing, and they're going to be raising their water rates, too. So everybody that thinks that we're the worst thing to put feet in shoes for what we've done to water, just have to look next door. It's happening to everybody, as well as the county's tax rate goes up, which is going to affect us also. So Calvin, thank you for everything that you've done as far as laying this thing out the way you have, and tracking these expenses since back in 2009, even farther back, I know you have, so that we can fully understand, you know, where this stuff is coming from. And we're going to, like Travis said, we're not going to cut any services, but we're going to try to find a way to raise revenue without everything being a tax on everybody. And hopefully, with the water plan that I'm going to be reading in soon, getting us another step closer, we're going to be another step closer to lifting that moratorium and hopefully see our assessed values go up. Now, once our assessed values go up, our taxes are going to go up, and that's not our fault. So when that happens, we don't want anybody coming down on us. That's all I have, sir.
I mean, the biggest thing is, the town of Rising Sun is, we're tightening our belt so that we can maintain this tax rate. Like Commissioner Althanreth said, we have agreed that we're going to try our hardest not to cut any services. I invite any citizens to come out to our budget meetings and to get involved in our town. You know, I think one of the most important things is, people want their sidewalks redone, people want their streets paved, but they don't want to pay a higher tax. To accomplish both is very, very hard, because in a lot of situations, it's either one or the other. It's cut services or raise your taxes. We've gotten creative with this budget, and we're looking forward to this upcoming fiscal year. So with that said, does anyone have anything else to say? All right. Can I get a, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you, Commissioner Althanreth. Town Administrator.
Mayor, I believe you have one more resolution.
2017-05.
In that section.
Yes. Resolution 2017-05, Master Water Sewer Plan Update.
All right. Would you like me to read it, or would you like to read it?
I'll give this one a shot.
All right.
Town of Rising Sun, Resolution 2017-05, the Rising Sun 2017 update to the Cecil County Master Water and Sewer Plan. Whereas the town located in Cecil County, Maryland, is a municipality organized under provisions of the Maryland Constitution and governed under the provisions of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. And whereas the town is proclaimed as a perpetual entity with the right to pass laws. And whereas, Section 9-503 of the Environment Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland requires Cecil County to have a master, to have a water and sewage plan. And whereas, Section 9-504 of the Environment Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland requires subsidiary plans for any town and/or municipal corporation that has existing or planned development in the county, and those plans may be incorporated into the county's plan. And whereas, the subsidiary plan for the town of Rising Sun's water and sewer systems is currently listed in Sections 4.1.8 and 3.2.9, respectively, of the Cecil County Master Water and Sewer Plan adopted in January of 2015. And whereas, the town of Rising Sun has moved forward with the replacement of its existing water distribution system with a new water supply provided by the Chester Water Authority operating just across the line in Pennsylvania, as spelled out and described in Section 3.29B of the adopted plan. And whereas, the final design of this water line requires a text amendment to the existing plan and updates to the Master Water Plan, Water Service District map. Therefore, the mayor and commissioners have reviewed the attached seven-page application packet and hereby approved these text amendments and map updates for further, and further authorized the formal submission of these documents to Cecil County Planning Commissioner and County Council for the review and consideration. Therefore, be it further resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on this 25th day of April 2017.
Thank you, Commissioner Althanreth. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2017-05?
Make a motion.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion regarding this resolution?
Yeah, Mayor, technically, we have to have a little bit more disclosure for the benefit of the law, and what I, you had this in your application packet. The, basically, the town has had the Chester Water Line in the Master Sewer and Water Plan since roughly 2009, and there have been two updates over the last couple of years which have not affected the line. However, the town was able to save money recently by choosing a different alignment, and that required us to reflect that alignment in the Master Sewer and Water Plan. So essentially, the line was supposed to come directly down Red Pump Road. The original plan said that the water line would be in the area of Red Pump Road. The new alignment, it is going to come down Red Pump Road off of Fremont, but then it's going to make a right on Ridge Road, and then come down some rather large farmlands because the town is saving significant amounts of money of not having to tear up Red Pump Road and then restore it, and to create a nuisance to all those property owners over there with the road being torn up. So we need to reflect that in the plan. So that's what the text is doing. And because we are changing the alignment here, going through some fields, we have to reflect that in the Water Service District area, because hypothetically, if there's a water line running in an area, it needs to be in your water service area. So if you look at this circle here, this square area down in here, is where the water line is going to be running right behind the properties on Red Pump Road, and you see the existing plan does not show that. The existing plan showed the water line running down Red Pump Road itself. And all of the areas that are in the Incorporated Limits are automatically in the water plan. So the property is immediately right across the street at Red Pump Road and Route 1. People remember that as a flappel property, the flappel lawsuit, Wellington Manor. That's already in the Incorporated Limits of Rising Sun, so it's automatically reflected in the water plan. So we just have to make the amendment to the map to reflect that. So that's what, and then this is the overall Master Water and Sewer Plan for the entire county. As Commissioner Althanreth read out, the environmental law says the county has to have a Master Sewer and Water Plan. That's what that is showing on the screen, and that all the subsidiary entities like Northeast, Elton, Perryville, Cecil Town, Port Deposit, Town of Rising Sun, we have to be reflected in that Master Sewer and Water Plan. So that's, that is where water and/or sewer, in this case, water is expected to be delivered, whatever, in six to 10 years, 15 years, depending upon the color shading. So this is the third amendment we've done since I've been here, and it's as a result of the Chester Water Line that we have to amend it.
Thank you, Town Administrator, for that further disclosure. Can I get a motion to approve this? We already motioned, it's already on the floor in the second. Can, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen and lady.
Thank you.
All right. Looks like, next on the agenda is the first reading of Resolution 2017-06A, which is the Town Administrator, and this is regarding the Dollar General Annexation.
Give me one second, Mayor. Yeah.
I have a question to ask you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do we have to read it in its entirety?
No, I'm not gonna read its entirety. Yeah, Mayor, Chief, if you'd give me that. I apologize, I had copied it into this directory, directory, but it's not showing up on the directory. This is, if you remember back in February, the mayor and commissioners entered into a annexation agreement with the Dollar General located at four oh one Telegraph Road. It's the Dollar General immediately east of the Sunoco Gas Station. They're looking to annex into the town. And as we explained before, the town is dealing with these annexations in a more professional manner, or a better manner than what we've done in the past. So we entered into an agreement that basically let the property owner know that as you go through the process, these are monies and things that you have to provide to the town of Rising Sun. I think it's important to say here tonight that that agreement does not bind the town of Rising Sun, and neither does what you're about to do here tonight bind the town of Rising Sun to anything. So the next step in the process after you do the agreement is for the property owner to submit an annexation plan and the related documents so that we can create a resolution that gets recorded, or gets tabled essentially until sometime in June, and I'll explain the reason why it's sometime in June, until some other work is done. So what we're required to do is read or introduce the resolution into the minutes for tonight. Again, there's no action taken tonight, and this does not bind the town of Rising Sun to any annexation. So it's Annexation Resolution two thousand seventeen dash oh six A, Annexation four oh one Telegraph Road, Rising Sun, Maryland. You have the standard boilerplate at the beginning we always talk about, and we're gonna pick up with, whereas the town of Rising Sun has received a request for annexation from a contiguous property owner, and the town of Rising Sun is agreeable to the extension of the corporate boundaries and related services of the town of Rising Sun by annexation of the subject property. Whereas pursuant to the authority of section three, home rule of Article XIE Municipal Corporations of the Constitution of Maryland, and of subtitle four of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland as amended, and the code of the town of Rising Sun, the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun are vested with the authority to enlarge the corporate boundaries of the town, and whereas no persons resides in the area to be annexed, and the sole property owner of all of the assessed valuation of the real property located in the area to be annexed, has consented to said annexation and an annexation agreement dated January twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, which will be recorded in the land record of Cecil County in the next couple of days, which also outlines the terms and conditions related to this annexation. It is therefore resolved by the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun that all of the following lands situate contiguous to the town of Rising Sun in the sixth election district, Cecil County, state of Maryland, known as four oh one Telegraph Road, shown the annexation plan attached here to as exhibit A, prepared for, prepared for a multi-associate LLC by the Pelsa Company dated February twenty-first, two thousand seventeen. The said parcel being more particularly bounded and described as follows. I'm not gonna read all the meats and bounds of the survey. Again, it's four oh one Telegraph Road, which is a Dollar General, which is immediately east adjacent to the Sunoco Gas Station. Be it added to the corporate boundaries of the town of Rising Sun, and any person residing in said area shall become resident of the town of Rising Sun, generally subject to the provisions of the Charter, Code of the Town of Rising Sun, ordinances, and other rules and regulations of the Town of Rising Sun. And be it further resolved that the zoning map of the town of Rising Sun be amended to include this newly annexed property, and that all the property be designated as Central Commercial Zoning District. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall become effective forty-six days following its passage and approval, again, that's not tonight. Therefore, be it further resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun introduce this resolution on this twenty-fifth day of April two thousand seventeen. And again, this property is located immediately east. The next step of the process is for this resolution and some other maps and documents to be submitted to the Cecil County Planning Commission. They will review it and make a recommendation to the County Council. There are a couple of public comment periods for the County Council for them to approve this annexation. The county does have the right to essentially suspend the annexation for up to five years, but that is typically done if the zoning of the county land is, the proposed zoning of the town's land is not consistent with the proposed, or the existing zoning of the county, they can essentially view it as a drastic change in zoning, and they can say, whoa, timeout, we wanna wait five years to do that. In this particular case, as you see on your document, Mayor and Commissioners, the current zoning in the county is BG Business General District, and the town of Rising Sun is proposing to bring it into our Central Commercial Zoning District. So it complies with our comprehensive plan, it complies with the master sewer and water plan, it essentially complies with all the documents that exist between the county and the town. The next step is to submit all of that stuff to those agencies. There will be a notice going out in the next week or so that will be advertised in the paper. It has to be advertised over two successive weeks, and that advertisement is gonna have all the information, and then there will be a public hearing before this body that will then review the comments that come back from the county and the County Planning Department. So there is still time for residents to come in, get more information, and come to the public hearing if they choose to comment, to enter comments about the proposed annexation. So that concludes the introduction.
Thank you, Town Administrator. All right, next on the agenda is citizens' input. Ms. Maynard?
I have a question. And I might be wrong. This year in the budget, are we gonna be putting in for a code enforcer? Are we gonna get somebody that's gonna start coming down on these people about junk in your yards, storage sheds being put up without permits, fences being put up without permits? Are we gonna be able to do something about this?
Would you like me to answer? It was carried in last year's budget, it is a discussion item. We have, we, let me answer it two ways. We have other options that we're going to try to pursue, but our issue has not been the fact that we don't have anybody, it's a enforcement disconnect, because currently under Cecil County's mandates, the county's state's attorney is the one that has to take any violations to court. And we've, we've, you know, voiced our frustration to the, the chief and I went to see the judges to express our frustration that you're asking the entity that's in charge of prosecuting serious crimes to suddenly put on their docket high grass junky stuff. And Cecil County is one of the few counties in the state that operates that way. So that has always been our, our roadblock to doing that. In the interim, we have tried to use other methods to try to get people to clean up their properties. It is, it is carried in last year's budget, there hasn't been a discussion as to whether or not it will be carried in this year's budget, as, at least as a full-time position, that has not been decided yet. With that, Mayor and Commissioners, I have been invited to a tentative meeting put forth by the town of Northeast to meet with the state's attorney over these concerns about the frustration of trying to get somebody on their level to deal with high grass and stuff like that. It's not the answer that we all wanted, but...
No, I mean, the most frustrating thing is exactly what Calvin said, which is, this looks bad on us, because we need to enforce it. However, we can't. That's the issue. What we're running into is, is the state's attorney is the one that's supposed to enforce it and take it to court, and you're asking a state's attorney who has drug charges or who has serious crimes on his docket.
So as neighbor, I mean, I mean, I don't understand, you can't go to the person and say, you really need to get this cleaned up. Not saying you're gonna charge him, just say, can it be cleaned up? You're not even allowed to do that.
We can say that.
Yeah.
But we have no legal authority to enforce that.
Yeah.
Meaning that they can basically say, no, I'm not gonna clean it up, and when we try to take them to court, which is the next step, we can't.
We are looking, we are pursuing the idea of a circuit rider. That's the other option. A circuit rider is a program put forth by, I can't recall the state agency that does it, but it's a circuit rider that communities in Cecil County could potentially share a code enforcement officer. So we can have the body to do that, but again, we run into the enforcement, the final enforcement action. Now, one of the things we are doing, that the chief and I have talked about, when we adopted our property maintenance code, we deliberately wrote it in a manner that our law enforcement officers could enforce some of these codes. We're looking to see what will hold up in court, because right now, our police officers can go to court and testify on the, on the town's behalf on minor violations such as traffic violations, and the state's attorney is not involved in that. So we're gonna try to piggyback on that initiative to get more proactive at it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak this evening? All right, we're gonna move forward into staff reports. Chief?
For the period of April eleventh through April twenty-fifth, we responded to two hundred and forty-six calls for service.
Give me one second, Chief. Okay?
Okay. During that time, if you recall, we are short one officer with the resignation of Chris Circus. We've had fifty-six hours of training, eight hours of holiday, and twelve hours of vacation. The amount of criminal enforcement, and that's kind of small, but we've arrested five individuals for possession of heroin, one, two fugitives from other areas, one that failed to appear in court for a drug charge, one that failed to appear for a theft charge, one for assault and resisting arrest, one for violation of a protective order, and another for assault. As far as the traffic is in the town, along Main Street, we wrote four speeding citations while stopping for two equipment violations and fourteen other violations. We made two traffic stops on North Walnut Street for speed and two for other violations. Mount Street saw five for equipment violations and one for other violation. Pearl Street, three for other violations. And the remaining roads around town, we stopped ten for speeding, two for equipment, and five for other violations. We also made one arrest for juvenile assault. In addition to that, we staffed two events, one being the Little League Parade, which basically calls for all hands on deck officers. And this year, we had the assistance of the Department of Public Works to help staff road closures in that event. We also brought them in to assist us with the Tiger Trot. The Tiger Trot took on a, an unusual component this year when it started to rain, and those events will go rain and shine. That makes it a little difficult for us, because people don't pay attention to driving when it's nice and sunny out. It kinda gets worse when it's raining. They care less about anything around them. So we had to go to great lengths with the assistance of the maintenance guys and the local fire police from Port Deposit, Northeast, Perryville, and Rising Sun. We were able to do that without any problems. We have two additional events coming up soon. The prescription drug takeback is this Saturday, we will have that staffed. For us, this is just a normal day, because we have a prescription drug takeback box in Town Hall's lobby, and people are more than welcome to bring in their old drugs, old prescription drugs, with the exception of hypodermic needles and liquids. We'll take the remaining and destroy them for you. We're gonna have that this Saturday from ten to two. Feel free to stop in during those hours, and if not, Monday through Friday, between nine and five, feel free to drop them off then. And the Sun Fest is going to be on June third, two thousand seventeen. Lastly, I want to give a little preview and warning about truck traffic along Main Street. I will be creating an initiative coming soon, and I won't say anymore. So pay attention, there's an initiative coming for truck traffic along Main Street.
Thank you, Chief.
Any questions? All right?
Thank you, Chief. Town Administrator?
Mayor, you brought this up earlier in unfunded mandates. We don't, it's not an unfunded mandate, but we're being put in the position of the collector again by the states, very similar to the Bay Restoration Fee. I just got notified that the state of Maryland passed the Maryland Home Builder Registration Act, and acting on its HBRA, that specifies that a person may not act as a home builder in the state of Maryland unless the person is registered as a home builder under the HBRA. The HBRA further establishes a home builder guarantee fund for the protection of consumers who contract with a registered home builder. The guarantee fund is supported by a guarantee fund fee paid by builders at the time of application for a residential building permit. And generally, home builders shall pay to a county or municipal corporation a guarantee fund fee per home or residential unit of fifty dollars with each application for a permit for construction of a new home. Per the statute, each month, a county or municipal corporation shall remit all of the guarantee fund fees to the Maryland Office of the Attorney General Consumer Protection Division to be deposited in the guarantee fund. Now, what I want to clarify, this does not affect anybody who's putting an addition on their house, putting a fence up, putting a shed, this is a true digging up the ground, putting the foundation in and building a new house. We now have to put a fifty dollar surcharge on top of the building permit fee. So I wanted to let you know that. The mayor brought up the issue, we had talked about this earlier, and it came up at our budget meeting, if you recall, the truck traffic in town. And there's two issues as I see it, the truck traffic on Wilson Road, which is coming from the Mushroom Farm, and then there is the truck traffic that the chief and I have talked about, that really gets pretty scary if you sit down at the bottom of Main Street near Harrington Autobody at about nine, ten o'clock at night, you can see some really heavily loaded trucks just roaring down that hill and in the town. And that's an issue. You have Wilson Road, they're tearing up our road, and it's all trucks going to the Mushroom Farm, and we have a tough issue that we have to deal with here.
I did, I did bring that up tonight. No, I'm just saying, I'm just kidding, it was the chief that brought it up, and the chief had something to say.
I put pictures of that on the end of my presentation.
Okay.
The next, go down a couple of slides.
Okay.
And you start to see some of the damage.
So this is Wilson Avenue. So the truck traffic is, is tearing Wilson Avenue up, this is looking down towards Veterans So you have that issue. The other issue we have... The other issue we have is these large trucks are coming up Main Street. Trying to make a right-hand turn to get onto 274. And last year, we had them not only hit the traffic light. But they brushed up against the facade of John Ballou's building over there and actually peeled some of the facade up on it. I mean, it's just ridiculous how big these trucks are and how they're trying to make the right-hand turn on the 274. Likewise, trucks coming up 274. Uh, South Queen Street trying to make a left on the Main Street are clipping everything over at the bank. And anyone who was here during that infamous streetscape knows that the town is short about four fancy streetlights. Because we just stopped replacing them. Because they just keep getting mauled over by the trucks. So, that is money that the taxpayers of this town are continually paying. And we talked about earlier, being financially responsible. That, as, as the chief was saying, we need to put an initiative together to see to what degree we can protect our taxpayers from this kind of truck traffic coming into our, our town and tearing our roads up. So, that's, uh, the one item. The other item I wanted to bring to your attention is we are seeing an increase in people thinking that it is okay to park on the town's sidewalks, which is against code. We know we've had a lot of discussions in our budget process about the amount of money that not only we have spent on replacing sidewalks over the last three years, but the amount of money we still have to spend going forward. And currently, right now, our ordinance says that property owners in many cases are responsible for 50% of that cost. So, if we're going to have delivery people pulling up on sidewalks because they don't want to walk a little bit further from the municipal lot. Or we have people who don't want to pull behind their property. And want to create their own parking lot right up by their front door, which means they're pulling up on sidewalks that we have just recently, uh, fixed. And so, um, I'd like for the board to, you know, I think it's important to officially say it's a zero tolerance. And Director Police Department to, you know, get out there and actively enforce this. And we might even go as far as checking in the ordinance to see if there's the ability to just directly tow. Somebody who's parking on the, I don't know, that's the chief's world. But we, we, we need to do something about this because we, as I said, it's $1.5 million in street repaving. And a couple hundred thousand of that is sidewalk repairs. And it's just really getting bad, people parking on the sidewalks. So, before you guys address that, three other quick items. We are going to be replacing the manhole in front of Sue's Restaurant. That one that keeps rattling everybody's brain in the morning when they're heading out to work or driving down there at nighttime. That was an initiative that Commissioner Arthur Reeth wanted us to take. So, we've gotten all our ducks in a row, and we're tentatively scheduled to do that Sunday, May 7th. Starting at 7:30 a.m. And should be completed by 11:30 a.m. Our police will be handling the traffic control and our public works crews handling the actual repair. This will be an overtime situation. We talk about our finances. It will be an overtime situation, but I think it's money well spent. Because we can minimize the disturbance to the area businesses and traffic during that time by doing it early Sunday morning. So, um, Chief, we need to remember to notify the fire department of that going forward. But that's tentatively set for Sunday, May 7th at 7:30 in the morning. Mayor, this is another initiative that you had, uh, discussed with the gentleman who does our, um, sh- uh, coding of the parking lot and line painting, Chris Wiggins. I talked to him today, and he is getting pricing together to redo the red coatings that were on the, uh, the street out here to restore the crosswalks.
That's so great to hear, because I think during our festivals especially, it'll really look good on the Main Street to have this redone.
So, um, if you recall, when Streets, Streetscape was done. The crosswalks were a nice red brick-looking material, which was basically just, the blacktop was stamped to look like bricks and then painted, and that's all it is. Um, the, the direction I need from the board. Chris told me, there's two ways you can approach it. You can grind that down because there is a residue that is still left on there. And in order to put the same product back down, it would have to be ground down. It's going to create a greater traffic disruption, and it's going to cost a lot more money to do that. As opposed to just painting it. And he said the town of Elkton chose to just paint it, even though they know that every year, every two years, they might have to jump out there and repaint it.
Yeah, but the cost of paint is significantly lower than grinding it down and, and the traffic disruptions.
And the other thing is, I, I think you got, like, up in, for example, uh, on North Queen Street, you're going to have, uh. From that one water main break, you're, you're probably looking at some point in the future, repaving that anyway. And I would say just wait until then before doing something like that.
Um, with that, I will say this. If you notice, State Highway has, you know, since I've been here, they've repaved, uh, South Queen Street twice. And if you look at all the patching they're doing down there, heading towards the college. I've been meeting to check with them to see if they have it on their timetable to repave it. And if you look at our Main Street itself, it's starting to show a lot of wear.
Calvin, they just did major repaving along there.
But they stopped at the, that one street that goes down between the farms, I can't think of.
I'm just looking at all the patching that's been done. And when you look at the sections in our town. They rise to the level where usually State Highway jumps up and repaves them. So, my point is, that's all the more reason not to spend a lot of money putting the top-of-the-line product out there now. Because they might very well come right through the intersection when they do it. So, that's one. So, is the board okay with me just pursuing, just having it painted?
I say yes, paint. What is the board's pleasure?
Agreed.
We have all in favor. Hopefully, knock on wood, they could get it done before Sun Fest.
That is the objective. The objective is to get that done. I'm going to talk to our guys about redoing the yellow line, the blue line, and the red line. And then also seal coating the municipal lot. All that is targeted to be done by Sun Fest. So, that the town center will be very attractive. And the last thing I just wanted to throw out there, because the elected body's been poked in the eye, and we as a staff have been poked in the eye. We don't have any control over what State Highway's doing in fixing the sidewalks. And like you, sometimes we come in and they're there. So, um, but we're doing the best we can to try to minimize and, and to assist them. But their intention is to go right through where they did Streetscape a couple of years ago and continue replacing all those handicap access ramps. So, I don't really know how long that's expected to take. But at least for the foreseeable future, we're going to continue to have, uh, road interruptions. So, if you would, if you go back to the, uh, parking on sidewalks and the truck traffic.
No, absolutely. One of the things that I did want to say was, if we do get advance notice of this, of, um, State Highway doing those ramps. We will pass it on to our citizens. It's just, like Calvin said, they're not giving us enough notice. Uh, sometimes we're coming in and they're in the middle of doing it. So, I did want to move back, uh, take a step back and go back to truck traffic and to, uh, parking on sidewalks. Uh, I know I personally think it's unacceptable, especially when we spend a lot of money replacing our sidewalks. And I do think that it's a good idea to instruct the chief to try to enforce that, as well as try to enforce, uh, limited truck traffic in our community. Uh, what is the board's pleasure with that?
I, I agree with you there too. And it's not just, um, you know, not every development in our town has a sidewalk per se. We have that rolled curb coming up to the grassy area. And a lot of developments were built with roads really weren't wide enough. And we've now got more cars at every household than we had 10 years ago. So, some people are parking on that rolled curbing, which is to tear, tearing that up too. So, we also like that enforced. Because we're responsible for that.
Does anyone feel any differently?
No, yeah. I can enforce, I can see enforcing the, the sidewalk. But the rolled curbing, you have no, you're now pushing, pushing it out into the street. And you're taking smaller streets and now making them even smaller.
Not to mention, I think you have to be within so much distance of that rolled curbing by law.
12 inches.
Yeah, the rolled curbing is designed to be, I mean.
Not on top of it.
Yeah. So, if we start with the rolled curbing, we're, we're potentially asking for a.
Well, do we ignore that and just spend money for people tearing it up intentionally?
Well, I, I don't think the, I don't think that gets torn up as much as the sidewalk.
Can, can I add from an engineering standpoint? Sidewalks are typically four inches thick, they can't handle it. Rolled curb is, can be anywhere from like 12 to 14 inch just blob of concrete. So, it's much more durable. And I don't know this per fact. But I believe that from an engineering standpoint, rolled curb is deliberately designed to be able to han- handle vehicular, uh, traffic. Doesn't mean that in the past, some of our developers that have done it, we don't have busted rolled curb. Just go up into Ryan Drive and look how bad that rolled curb is. And, uh, so.
All right, so, let's do a little bit more research on the rolled curb. But currently, let's move forward with doing sidewalks.
Doing sidewalks, yeah.
Truck, are you in favor of limiting truck traffic as well?
Yeah, we've talked about that before, especially as bad as it's tearing up that road. And I, I saw, I heard about the light getting hit, and I saw it.
Yeah, we, we were standing out there, one light, the one got hit by John Ballou's. And the different light, I was standing out there with the store commission, it got hit in front of Town Hall, so.
The crosswalk lights are constantly getting.
Chief, I know you were already creating an initiative in regards to this, but, um, I think it's good to also have the board's backing as well, so.
I sent an email to Calvin today as I was coming down Wilson Avenue. There were already two fully loaded dump trucks up at Mushroom Farm. And four of them passed me by, going in that little section, one right after another. And that road clearly is not designed to take that much weight.
Right. I mean, I make a motion that, like, I, I think we're going to break this up into some separate motions here. I, I make one motion that we, um, designate the, uh, section of Wilson Avenue from Main Street to Kirk Court. Which is the section that the town, uh, owns. Uh, as, uh, no truck traffic. I guess we have to probably make an exception for local deliveries within that little section. Like, there's somebody's residence.
Can I make a recommendation? I would, I would, I would suggest that you make a motion to charge the chief and I with developing the proper legal language.
I like it.
To do it. Because there might be limitations of what we can do. And at the end of the day, I'm a firm believer that you should have a document.
Yeah.
Spelling out exactly what it is.
I agree. So.
Withdraw your motion.
Yeah, I withdraw the previous motion and make a new motion that we, um, ask the town administrator and chief of police to, uh, come up with language for restrictions of truck traffic from Main Street through to Kirk Court. On Wilson Avenue, the section of, uh, road the town owns.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. All right, moving forward into, uh, old business.
Hold on, that's one motion.
Do we need to do one for the sidewalk?
Yeah, I make a motion that we, um. Uh, direct the chief of police and the town administrator to, um, look at the town ordinances and, uh. Make any enforcement provisions, as well as recommendations to the board of commissioners, uh, for any improvements to those ordinances. To allow for enforcement of no parking, um, on the town sidewalks by the town police department.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Hold on, hold on, Chief.
Thought the objective was for us to remove the.
Yes. That's a, and enforcement of no parking, as well as removal of those vehicles. I'm sorry.
All right, the motion has been amended.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Oh, you meant to his.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes, thank you, gentlemen.
I also make a motion that we direct the town administrator to, um, and the chief of police to work with State Highway Administration. To try and find some solution to the number of trucks turning from, uh, Main Street onto 274. I'm sorry.
Can you add county roads? Because the majority of where, where they are coming from are county roads.
Okay. So, Main Street and county roads. I'm going to withdraw that motion and start over. I make a motion that we direct the town administrator and the police chief to work with, uh, Maryland State Highway Administration, as well as the Cecil County Roads Department. To, uh, try and find some solution to reduce the amount of truck traffic, um, through town, as well as try and, uh. Um, reduce the number of maneuvers within town that are causing damage to, uh, traffic control devices, as well as, uh, buildings and, and streets and intersections.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, under old business, I did see an update regarding the budget session. Did we cover that in the beginning?
We did that.
Okay, we did that in the beginning, okay. All right, uh, new business. We have a couple of vacancies. We actually have three. Two on the Board of, uh, Zoning Appeals, and then we have one position for our Ethics Board. Uh, we are looking for parties that are interested in serving. So, uh, if you are interested, send an email to me or send an email to one of the Board of Commissioners. Uh, I know, um, that we want someone that is dedicated, that can be here. Uh, one of the conversations I had with Commissioner Ron, uh, was regarding the amount of time. Uh, it does take a lot out of your time. Uh, you can be here for three to four hours a night, um, to do this. And I know people have jobs, that they have certain commitments. Uh, but we are definitely looking for people that are interested in serving on our town boards. Moving into the mayor's report, I have no report tonight. It's up to say that I thought the Tiger Trot 5K, the, the Rising Sun Police Department, as well as our Public Works Department, did a fantastic job. Uh, big shout out to Mr. Jim Boyd, uh, for doing that. Every single year to benefit the Rising Sun Middle School, he does a great job. Uh, and I also wanted to give a brief shout out to Commissioner Warnock. I know he will go into depth about this, but on Earth Day, he had a group of volunteers back at Veterans Community Park working hard. Um, so, a big shout out to him. All right, moving forward into Commissioner comments, Commissioner Arthur Reeth.
Uh, I don't have anything else, Mr. Mayor.
I don't have anything.
All right.
I don't have anything.
All right, Commissioner Warnock.
Sorry, I'm going to ruin the perfect record.
Um, but I'll be fairly brief. The, uh, we had a park cleanup on April 22nd. Uh, it was, uh, we had a, a large number of volunteers that were planning on coming out, um, from West Nottingham Academy due to the weather. They asked to postpone to April 30th, which is a Sunday morning. Uh, I believe we're, um, the times, timeframe for Sunday morning on April 30th is 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. If anybody's interested in coming out and volunteering. We, uh, did have a few volunteers that came out, and we, uh, managed to, uh. Remove a lot of garlic mustard, which is an invasive species that we deal with in our parks. The reason that we work so aggressively to remove it is it relieves, uh, releases a sulfur compound in the soil, and it kills all the native plants. So, um, without getting too technical, it's, uh, it's not a good plant to have in our parks. It, uh, has a nice white flower on it, it's easy to find, easy to pull, but it looks attractive. But unfortunately, it does a lot of damage. So, we've been working pretty hard at removing it from the park. And, uh, the section that we worked on last year, uh, didn't come back very much. It came back with a little bit, but it's, um, you can see a, a different, a difference between the sections that we tackled and the sections that we didn't. The section that we cleaned up, there was almost none left. The section that we didn't touch last year came back in full force. So, our goal is to get the rest of that removed this year from that park. Additionally, we did some plantings last year, and, uh, there's been some overgrowth on those plantings. We removed some of the overgrowth a few weeks ago, and, um, we're hoping to have the group that comes in finish removing the overgrowth over those plants. And get mulch around the base of the plants to make it easier for our Public Works Department to mow that area. We, uh, because it's a wetlands area, we can't use anything that's fill without permits, so, uh, that includes mulch. So, we've been, uh, taking material that's on site and running it through a chipper and, uh, making our own mulch. So, it's, um, been an interesting process. You learn a lot about wetlands in this role, I guess. Especially when you have them in your purview. So, uh, that's pretty much the things going on over in the park right now. I am meeting with, uh, two Eagle Scouts over at the Dog Park on Friday. To, uh, discuss the continuation of the boardwalk sections from the bridge over to the environmental learning platform, as well as the section from. as well as the section from the environmental learning platform parallel to it out towards the, the grass and where eventually the trail, Mulch Trail connect in. So, those are the, the big things we have going on. And with that, I think that concludes, I felt like there was something else, but I'm going to go with that concludes my report for the time being.
One of the things that I will add is that I had a, a brief conversation with Commissioner Warnock about movies in the park, and I'm excited to work a little bit more in tandem with him this year on that in helping to promote movies in the park and helping to pick titles as well. So, I did want to thank him for that. Upcoming meetings, mark your calendars. We have a Planning Commission workshop on May the 1st, that's at 6:30. Then we have a fiscal year 2018 budget workshop, which is May the 4th, and that's at 6:30. We have our regular scheduled town meeting on May the 9th at 7:00 p.m. And then we have another Planning Commission workshop on May the 15th at 6:30. We have another fiscal year 2018 budget workshop on May 16th at 6:30. Then we have another town meeting on May 23rd at 7:00. And then we have another fiscal year budget workshop on June the 1st at 6:30 p.m. And like the town administrator said, these dates are definitely in flux. If one of us gets sick or if some of us can't make it, we may have to cancel and reschedule, but we certainly will make everyone aware of that, if that does happen. All right, Memorial Day, May 29th. The town hall will be closed as well. Moving forward, is there any more business to come for the board tonight? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.